With that, we'll start our study session this morning. And again, the mayor's out of town in excuse. The first items is to review our agenda for Monday, January 27th meeting. So council members, if you'd like to go through the agenda for that day on Monday.
I have quite a few questions. On 3M, we're having a presentation and are we covering that? On the right-of-way improvements on Hibbert to Los Suers?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll wait on any questions when we have our presentation.
Point number four.
3M?
Four.
Four.
Okay, all right. And then...
No, that was on the study session, right? We're going through the council agenda right now?
To council members, Duff, we have, she's correct, that there is a presentation we're making after the review of the agenda items that covers the item, I think it's the item regarding the maintenance agreement. Is that correct?
No, I was just looking at more of what the improvements are going to be.
Okay. And 4M?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or 3M, I don't know.
Four.
Okay.
The first sheet right-of-way, I just want to be clear which, what we're talking about.
Maybe I have it bookmarked off of the different of agenda, okay.
So we'll move to your question on 4M.
Okay, yeah. And then on 4C. Approving the transfer of ownership of two city-owned parcels of real property improvements to a new leaf and authorizing the city manager to execute the documents to facilitate the transfer.
That's 5C.
Why is not...
You're in an initial, you're in the older draft. One liquor license was added, so it threw all the numbers in.
Oh, okay, so I'm on the older draft?
Yeah, reset, just reset and go back into your legislative, probably reset it.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, that's why we're all going on.
Oh, okay, so when I made all my notes, then there's another...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, okay, all right. So what number is it?
The transfer is on five, I think.
Okay.
5C, yep.
All right, okay, 5C, all right. There is the property on North Mesa Drive, property number one, the main property Mesa Drive in Main, for transitional housing for single women who are overcoming homelessness and stuff. I've become aware of some interest to purchase and develop that property for, along Mesa Drive, which has also been part of my concerns of the New Leaf properties. Yes, I believe that New Leaf needs the properties and they're well-used, but as we develop downtown, I think about the highest and best use for the properties, especially along our arterials. And would it be possible to maybe put the property up for sale, given there's some interest on it, that I think would be enhanced our viability economically in the city? Put it up for sale, find another property that would maybe not be on the face of an arterial and that we would be better used for the transitional housing, it to be tucked in a little bit, and then to allow this to develop for our benefit as far as the success of the city, and it's across the street pretty much, or within a short vicinity of our transformed 17 property. So I had just a question on if that's the highest and best use for the property.
I got a quick question before we start. What item are we referring to?
5C.
5C, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All my notes were on a previous draft.
I just wanted to make sure, thanks, Jim.
So council, maybe perhaps we can do maybe a historical overview, maybe with Natalie here and tell the processes and everything that a new leaf has done and how these, how we acquired the properties and their use and how they're managed today, and then we'll transfer into this conversation. Natalie?
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Duff and the City Council. I'm also joined today by Michelle Albanese. She's our brand-new Housing and Community Development Director. We're really glad to have her. She's got a lot of experience in the CDBG and use of federal dollars, so we're really excited to have her and her expertise on our team. So she can also help us in some of this background and the research. To answer the question most directly, if it's the council's will that we go ahead and look at a different way of disposing of this property, we can do that. But there are a lot of caveats that go with that answer. The city has been transferring properties in this manner for many, many years, probably even close to 50 years. And so what we do is we use federal dollars. These are CDBG dollars that are meant for services in our community, for low-to-moderate income and in homelessness and in people in crisis situations. And so the city is sort of the pass-through mechanism in that. And so what we do is we purchase these properties not for a real estate transaction, but for a service transaction. And so what we do is we purchase them and we lease them to a nonprofit agency that then in turn provides these services to the community. So for the two that are on the agenda today, both of them are under a lease right now with the New Leaf, so that's something to consider, that we have an existing lease in place that we would have to look at. But for the two that we have, New Leaf has basically been using them for somewhere between 24 and 28 years for these purposes. And so HUD has a process, you know, we don't just transfer it, but they have criteria and things that we have to do. We brought those criteria to the City Council a few months back, and you've approved them on how we go ahead and transfer these. And one of them is, we want to make sure that when we transfer the property for this continued service and use, that it keeps happening for at least a period of 10 years. And so that's the agreement that we would have with a new leaf if we continue down this path of transferring the properties. And staff recommends doing it. Like I said, we've been doing this for a very long time, but if the council wants us to look at a different process, then we can, we can do that.
I think Natalie, too, on page four of the updated council report, it talks about the alternatives that you just mentioned. I know I read through it a couple of days ago, but those are some alternatives to council, if you like. But council member, I think you had a question?
So I would be in support of transferring the property to a new leaf. I know that they have, I've been, I volunteered for New Leaf for many years. I'm very familiar with the New Leaf and what they've done. They have put thousands and thousands of dollars to remodel the facilities, and I would hate to, to not allow them to have the ownership of that property based on the improvements that they've made and based on what they do for our community. They've helped many, many women who have undergone domestic violence, and we want to continue to support a new leaf any way we can to ensure that they provide that service for our community.
I'm not suggesting that we discontinue the service or not have the property. I'm suggesting that maybe it would be in a different location. Is that an option?
So yes, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Duff and Councilmember Luna, we can look at that process. Again, we have an existing lease in place, so the one that you refer to on Mesa Drive that a developer is currently interested in has a lease that I believe doesn't come up for renewal until November of 2021. So that's the first thing, just to understand. The second thing is, is we don't have another property that we can just transfer this to, so we would have to figure out a way to provide that seamless transition, you know, to Councilmember Luna's point, we don't want to interrupt the service because it is so critical for Mesa and women in particular in crisis.
Councilmember Luna?
You know, and I would have to agree with it. The issue is going into a new property and trying to revamp it and make the improvements that they need in order to accommodate the services. Their current property provides daycare for children, women who have experienced domestic violence. Going into a new property, they would have to start over again. So I would not support, I would support them, the property being transferred to a new leaf and then continue providing the services they need. Otherwise, it'll totally disrupt the services that they provide to this community.
Nat, I had a question. Are there any historical significance to any of the buildings or the homes there when they were built? I think the one on University seemed like it was an older residence, but I don't know the build date on it.
Vice Mayor, I don't believe any of them have been identified on the historic register. I do know the one on University, which is not part of this discussion on the agenda, does a but in historic neighborhood. But these two, I don't think have any type of historic significance, but I can double-check that after the meeting.
Okay, thanks. So council, are there any more comments?
I got a couple of questions. What's the value of these parcels?
So do we know the current value that we have?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The property on Hobson, which is the East University Drive in Hobson, that one is appraised at $121,000 as of September 2017. The University property, that one is appraised at $350,000 based on 2017 appraisal. And the Main property, which is Mesa Drive and Main Street, was appraised at $166,000 for 2017.
And just one clarification, even if we do sell those dollars for market rent, they go right back into the CDBG, so they don't belong to the City of Mesa.
Restricted funds on this one?
Correct.
And what, I apologize, I'm out of the loop on this, but what's the purpose of transferring ownership of these properties and not just keeping it the way it is and just having a lease agreement in place?
So we can absolutely keep it the way that it is in a lease. This was a request that came directly from New Leaf, and I think Mike Hughes is here in the audience, and he can speak a little bit more to, you know, the key purpose for him, but what I understand is that this just, it creates an asset on their paper, and it helps them basically demonstrate that they can provide additional services and leverage the asset in their inventory. So it's all about providing more services to the City of Mesa and with what New Leaf does. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Natalie, I have a question for you. How many of these type of properties do we have in our portfolio? And are you looking to divest yourself of these properties, you know, by the transfer? Does it simplify our lives as a city?
Well, let me clarify, we don't, the city is not initiating this. This came at the request of the...
Correct, I understand.
So we're not, we only do it upon the request of the applicant, so, because far, you know, these have been leased out for how many years?
24 to 28 years.
Yeah, so we've, it's, so, and maybe Mr. Hughes could explain why now that's important for them to transition the asset, the title, to his books from the city. But effectively, for the last 20-plus years, these have provided services, we've rented it to them to continue providing these services. As far as the city's concerned, we would continue to do that in perpetuity. There's no defined, you know, we have a termination, but I'm assuming that, like a lot of these, we would just extend that beyond that, because I'm assuming when these were acquired, Mike, initially, it was for the specific intent to, for New Leaf to provide services, so that's, assuming we would continue in that direction.
That's correct.
Welcome, Mr. Hughes. You want to make a comment?
First of all, we don't want to create any controversy. The city has been tremendously helpful to us. You've done so much for us and so many venues, and we've had other properties. And to not throw a, I guess, a curveball at you, but to just be candidly, because that's been my history with the council, the 149 property, that is a property that is, in a sense, it's landlocked, it's not an ideal piece of property. If you, you probably could drive by that piece five years and not realize it's there. And that property, candidly speaking, if we could find an alternative site, if there was somehow a possibility to do that, we would be open to that, because if it's in the best interests of the city, and if we could substitute that, yes, we've put a lot of money into that, maybe we could work something through with the city. But that is very, in a sense, you know, doable. I think that the 302 site on Hobson, that is actually a part of the Autumn House campus. So that would, that would actually pose a very adverse problem, you know, risk for us, because it's, it's part of the other five buildings. It's, you know, we have, we have two houses and then houses in the back, you know, apartments in the back. So that is an integral piece of the Autumn House delivery services. So that, that would be very difficult for us. But the 149, again, in terms of trying to work with the city and do what's best for the city, and then if we could have that reciprocated and do what's best for us, you know, maybe we could work something out, because that is not, that's not ideal. It's very difficult parking, getting in and out of the site. But again, we want to also do what's best for the city.
Council, I mean, if it's okay, do you want to table this, pull this from the agenda and discuss it further?
Yeah, I think to pull it from the agenda...
Just to vet it out a little bit more?
Discuss it more. I would like to discuss what the process would be if we wanted to fulfill the lease within a reasonable time, find another property. I think appraisals are, property values in this area have escalated dramatically in the last two years, probably at least 20%. I think there might be a property more in, tucked in off of an arterial, that you actually might get more bang for your buck, where properties along arterials right now are highly desirable as we're developing in downtown. So it might, you know, create a situation that it's a win-win for the city being able to develop along the arterials and, you know, be able to find housing for your services that are more accessible and maybe have more space. I think we'd maybe look at that property on Mesa Drive. Now, the one on Hobson, I agree, I think we should transfer that, and I think it is the best and highest use in being in the continuum of the other properties there and providing services, absolutely. I just wanted to take a pause and reevaluate the Mesa Drives, especially we have, when I first looked at it, I just thought, well, it's such a tiny piece, kind of slipped in there. I didn't think it would be a desirable piece, but when it developed...
Is that the Mesa Drive?
The Mesa Drive, because it would be, you know, a really hard piece to sell, I thought, because it was so inaccessible. But now with a developer interested in it, and I understand it'll go to public, we're not saying this developer would, we'd say, here it is and you can buy it, we'd go through a public process. But if that developer found it to be a priority for their development and expanding from their property just north of there, next door to it, and being able to, we might be able to maximize, you know, the potential of that property and also provide a better property, you know, those, the apartments there, being able to have a better property to serve our growing downtown. So I just want to take a pause and, for that consideration, to look at that and see if that's feasible before we continue with the transfer.
Natalie?
So if it's the council's pleasure, I could make one other suggestion, is that we continue forward with the Hobson transfer, since there seems to be agreement on the council to move forward with that one. This has been a very long process, and I appreciate New Leaf and their patience as we've gone through it. So if we could just get that one completed and moving forward, then what we could do is take this Mesa Drive and add it to the Community and Cultural Development Committee meeting that we have set for, I think, March 19th, and we can discuss options at that point, along with the University property, if that's the council's pleasure.
I'm in support of that.
I have one other quick question. How old are those appraisals?
Yeah, 2017.
And you said appreciation is roughly 20% over the last two years?
I would just guess from, you know, I live nearby, and there's been dramatic increases.
And, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's been dramatic increases. We've been a very depressed area, and there's a lot of demand right now, especially with the development that's going on around downtown, so the prices have escalated dramatically. Even the, I say 20%, but we're talking about an area that was very depressed, so we're getting more to at-market than below-market.
And we're talking about just a gifting of an asset, right? We're not talking about the sale of an asset. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, we're talking about a transfer, not a, yeah, not a gift, yeah.
And what's the revenue that's brought in annually from New Leaf to our CDBG funds from these existing leases?
The revenue?
Sorry, what's the lease amount annually for these two properties? Or do we not...
Astronomical fee of $1.
See, that is, this whole system is set up to provide services, so when we initially acquired this years, decades ago, it was never intended, it's not a real estate transaction, it's to acquire the property, convey it for specific public service purposes that are eligible under the federal government guidelines. So there's no intended to try to create a real estate play because using federal dollars. So that essentially, you buy the asset, we do it as a lease, and then at some point, recently, New Leaf can come to us and say, hey, we'd like to see it transferred to us. If we transfer to them, we can do that, but again, under HUD regulations and council guidelines or policy, then I think it's for at least another 10 years from that point forward, they have to continue to provide those same services. So effectively, for that, that one property was purchased by federal dollars, you get over 30 years, 34 years of public service. So that's kind of how it's looked at.
And Councilmember Whitaker, if you want, we could get some information after the meeting about what's happened during this time period in the last 24 years and the services that have been provided and the value to the community to give you a sense of that. And that's, that's how we differentiate between a gift and a transfer.
Yeah, I have no issues with the transfer anyways, so I think, I got a little blinded here, is that we're having this meeting first, and I think my meeting with you guys is actually after this meeting, so I'm a bit out of the loop, but I have no, I know a new leaf is a great organization, so I have no question, I mean, we can transfer, I don't have any objections.
Councilmember Luna, question?
Mike, do we do DV stop on Main and property on Main?
We actually do DV stop at 924 East University.
What are we doing, what services do we provide on Main and Mesa Drive?
The Mesa Drive is for women that have been at Autumn House and have done very well and don't have a place to transition to, so they transition to that facility, and we have women living there. One of the things that is positive about being on that site is it's close to the light rail.
Right.
Because many of these people do not have transportation themselves, so they need public transportation.
And it's accessible to public safety as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So Mike, are you okay with what we're discussing so far?
Yeah, again, I mean, the city's been great to us, and we are partners with long-term goals for what you want to do, and if we, I just candidly speaking, the 149 Mesa Drive site, that, while that, you know, that's been helpful, but if there's something that we could do to help you and then we could have that replaced with something, that, maybe that could come out a win-win. I mean, the city, you've helped us with East Valley Men's Center with CDBG property, you've helped us with Mesa Can, so that partnership is strong, and we know that times change, but we, we, we value the relationship we have and we appreciate what you do for us.
Okay. So, Councilmember Duff?
Well, we appreciate absolutely New Leaf in our community, and I can't say enough good about, you know, the things that you do to make a difference, so thank you. My suggestion is just to look at that and see if there's a property that makes sense, and if there isn't, and we figure out this isn't going to work because we don't have a great alternative, then, you know, maybe we can go back into the transfer. I just wanted to pause and see if there's something feasible that would work for everybody.
So Vice Mayor, I think what I'm hearing of council is okay, we'll just modify the agenda and keep the Hobson, is the Hobson property to remain, and we'll just remove the other properties off the agenda for Monday.
If that's okay with council, that's what I'm hearing as well.
Okay, we can do that.
I have one other request as well. I need to go back and check, but I think I'm a donor to New Leaf, so I'm just going to conflict off the vote entirely when it comes up on Monday.
All right, I think we've settled that issue. Okay, any other, I'd like to go back to, on my iPad, 4C, the fire department, we're, Mr. Brady or Chuck, I always have to...
You're, you're...
You know, we're spending $4.5 million for a fire apparatus and just want to make council aware, that's a big purchase, that seldom happens with this type of purchase, and I appreciate the department, all departments looking forward to get the correct apparatus to deliver services to our city. I did have a question, does the City of Mesa get any tax return incentives when the purchase of these vehicles?
Any, and what's that?
City tax incentives, I mean, sales tax return.
I don't think this is purchased in Mesa, so it's probably...
Well, there's Arizona sales tax on there as well as Phoenix sales tax, so I don't know whether we've collected something. Just looking through it, but no big deal.
We'll get back to you, I don't know.
That's all right. Okay. Anything else, council?
I do have one more item.
Which one is that?
Hopefully I refreshed and have the right item. We have half a million dollars of home dollars that are being returned to the city, and we're going to transfer those into the primary, $450,000 of it to homeowner rehabilitation program, which I understand will go to three or four major renovations of homes, and my concern was home dollars, half a million dollars, if we could serve a greater number of residents rather through, I don't know the process, and I tried to understand it the other day and I was still vague, is there enough time to have those dollars available for transitional housing or some kind of other housing that would affect a greater number of people in greater need?
So Michelle and your staff, how would you like to respond?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Duff, the home dollars are allocated and have to be expended within a certain period of time, and if they're not, then there's penalties to the city about returning the funds back. So at this point, these funds have already been allocated to a contract, it's now been returned to us, so there's a period of time that's already gone by for us to commit those funds. So we have several individuals on our waitlist right now for the rehab program. We have approximately 42 individuals who have been waiting on there for anywhere from two to three years. The last application, they applied January in 2020, and the first individual that's been on there has been since 2016. So we can make a great impact on the substantial rehab with these funds.
Perhaps I misunderstood, but I understood that it would probably be applied to three to four homes to do major rehabilitations, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so three to four families. For us to reallocate the dollars, does it have to be within the existing database of what we have on home dollar applications? There's not enough time to go out and get new applications, because I know quite a few projects in need of home dollars, but I don't know if there's enough time, and does this have to be by our fiscal year-end?
August, I believe, is our deadline for commitment of home funds. Currently, I don't know what that commitment is, requirement is, we can look into that. But if we do take these funds and put them into another project, typically, there's a value that you can assign to each unit. When you look at $450,000 or $500,000, typically, we get anywhere from three to four units that are home units anyway. So whether we give them to a developer to develop housing for three or four units, or we go and use it for rehab of three or four units, it's pretty much going to serve the same amount.
Michelle, maybe someone explain, how did these dollars become available?
How did they, oh, so this was awarded to Legacy on Main, or Legends of Main, excuse me, Legends of Main, it's a senior affordable housing... me, Legends of Main, it's a senior affordable housing project that came through the state. I believe they got housing bond financing for this project. They had asked for our funds for gap financing. We awarded those to them, but after they've did a little checking around, they found better financing, and they were able to get a better interest rate, therefore, they didn't need our money. That helps them because there's less regulations they have to deal with. So, now they're just dealing with the state, and they're not having to deal with our funds as well. So, they returned them.
And how many units was that?
I believe we only had three to four units on that one as well.
It wasn't a larger?
Well, it was a larger complex, it was 237 units.
But every unit, the unit, the cost per unit is, consists of what I'm hearing?
Yes. So, even though you got tax bonds or tax financing in there, our home dollars only go toward anywhere from two to three, or, excuse me, three to four of those units.
So, I hate to get into a meeting about this, so we might, I might have to arrange one to get, but, so, I understood, like, when we, I thought when we gave home dollars, awarded home dollars to a project, that that was averaged in, and so, the entire project could be offered more affordably, not just three or four units are affordable.
There's a dollar amount they assign per unit that you can't exceed. So, anytime we do a project like that, there's, you do a calculation, you figure out how much each unit's going to cost for that whole development, and then they look at that and say, okay, let's just say it costs $150,000 per unit to develop this site, we have $500,000 worth of home dollars, so we try to get four home units out of that if we try to do something like that. The rest of it would be other financing.
So, when we have affordable housing projects, you're telling me that only three to four units are affordable and the rest of it are market?
No, what I'm saying is they're home assisted units. The rest are under other financing, they could be affordable.
They could choose to be affordable, they could choose to be affordable, but because if they use a hundred dollars, that, what are three or four are required to be affordable.
Yeah, so, it depends on the financing. Even a developer that did a private development, any apartment complex, they can come to us and say, we want to use home dollars and develop affordable units within our market-rate housing complex, and they can do that, and we would agree to finance something like that. Just depends on who's the financing mechanism.
Okay.
But the advantage of this list of taking these dollars that have been sitting there since, was they allocated in the last go-round?
Last year, yeah.
Last year is, we, the city has internally a program where we manage it ourselves. We do a few, I don't know how many units we do a year, Ray, but, so, we already have an existing list, and so, it helps us, we can take these, we already have the individuals, they've been qualified, I'm assuming, and so, we can quickly spend this money and not lose the money to HUD, so that's why we do it.
Yeah, currently, we have 42 applicants that are looking to have substantial rehab done to their properties. That's a pretty big waitlist. We do anywhere from two to three of these substantial rehabs a year. We're averaging basically one application per month for substantial rehab.
And I don't disagree with the need and the viability of the rehabilitation, absolutely. We have so many needs, and I just wanted to make sure that the monies that we have available had the greatest impact for our community, the greatest number of people that we can assist. So, that was my intent. Now, to go back into any other, I assume there's not enough time to look at any other options other than what we already have on file?
We would have to go back and look at what our commitment date and how much those funds that we need to commit to the home program, that's a deadline, like I said, is, I think it's end of August, but we can check into that for you.
Councilmember Duff, can, Councilmember Heredia, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry, just on the rehab, what's the types of rehab that are done, or what the four properties, or three to four properties that you mentioned, what's the types of rehab that they're looking for? That's my first question, then, there's also 50,000 on the tenant-based rental assistance, how many does that help, you know, an estimate on rental assistance, that 50K?
The tenant-based rental assistance could average anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500 per person, or per household, basically. There is times that it might go higher than that. The, as far as the rehabs go, the kind of rehab that we do, we go in there, kind of like we did the NSP program, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but a lot of the systems that are in place in these homes are 60 years old, it's cast-iron piping, the cast-iron piping doesn't hold up very well, particularly if you don't use it. If you don't use it, that pipe just starts corroding and it pretty much rusts shut. You have to use it on a consistent basis, and a lot of times, these homes sit vacant, as we know through the foreclosure crisis, they really deteriorated as a result of that. They might get back in operation, but a lot of these people are having problems with the plumbing, the electrical wiring, the insulation is all deteriorated because of the hot, the heat that we have here in Arizona, doesn't have the insulation that the newer wiring does. So, we go in there, completely replumb, new drain, waste, and vent, sewer lines, new water lines, new electrical, we go in there and to replace the windows.
Fire sprinklers?
Not fire sprinklers anymore.
Oh, we don't do anymore?
We used to do fire sprinklers.
We do fire sprinklers.
But we, new roof, new ACs, we also put the high-efficiency ACs in them, we take them off the roof. It's one of the agreements we worked out with the State Historic Preservation Office, which I think Nana can attest to, they don't want to see the AC units on the roof, they'd like to get them off, so we take those off the roof, we put them in the attic or in a closet in the house, we put the ground-mounted unit out there. We try to make them nice and presentable, so when you drive by the street, it looks like a brand-new house, so.
So, varies the needs per applicant, could be major work done, or also.
ADA?
Yeah, it could be ADA, accessibility's that we do, it could be just emergency rehabs, but with home dollars, we are required to bring the house up to code, that is a requirement. So, anytime you use home dollars, you have to bring it up to current building code, which requires changing window sizes because you have to meet egress requirements. We have energy efficiency requirements now. Typically, these homes are old block homes, as we all know, they're not insulated, so we actually go in there, rip off the drywall that's on the inside, and remove the furring and refur the wall back out, put in four inches of, or three and a half inches of insulation, and re-drywall it. So, we also put an additional R40 in the attic as well.
You're good.
I know I have reduced in my, in the NSP program, I've reduced energy costs by 65% in any of the homes during the summertime, and that's a huge savings for a homeowner.
Councilmember Thompson?
And going back to Councilmember Duff, I mean, you know, 450,000 for four houses, I mean, $100,000 apiece, I'm wondering, you know, what you're telling me, it sounds like some of these houses probably should just be raised and rebuilt. You know, if you have a list of 22 homes, you have 450,000, I think, spreading the peanut butter, where you could get $20,000 per home to real make, to make some type of significant impact without totally rebuilding a house, are we able to do that?
But that's, I think that's what Ray was making, the point or Michelle wants to make, is once we touch this house with home dollars, you just can't go.
The whole thing has to go.
Yeah.
Wow.
So, it's, it, and I'll tell you, if you've ever gotten into one of these neighborhoods and seen the homes that are done either by us or by the private sector, it is, it is the nicest home in that neighborhood, and it begins to kind of send a message that if we can do them, and we used to constantly, in NSP, we picked kind of some zip codes and said, we're going to put all the money in this area, and I think it's really made a difference. And it is expensive, but again, maybe Michelle can explain, once you touch it with these dollars, it's not like, well, we can just put a slap.
So, it's not like, you know, if they have a plumbing issue, you can't just go in and replace the plumbing, and the plumbing has to be up to code.
Everything comes.
So, once you touch the plumbing, you have to do the electrical, the windows, the insulation.
Yeah, so, part is crazy.
No, you can't ask. Okay, Councilmember Luna has a question.
No, it's really more of a comment, I've had the opportunity to go to some of these homes that you've refurbished. One of the things it does against the homeowner or the resident, a sense of pride, they have a great place now, they have air conditioning, they have new doors, and it really revitalizes the community. Sure, do we wish we had more home dollars? We don't, we only are allocated the half a million, and would love to spread it across the community, but we do have limitations in terms of what we can do. So, how many homes have we've actually rehabbed since you've been here, Ray?
Well, under the NSP program, I did 64.
Okay.
And then, a lot of those were, and then I did a bunch of triplexes and fourplexes as well, and some duplexes. I think 33 or 37 units, I can't remember exactly, it's been a while. But under the home program, we used to do mainly emergency rehab, that was replacements of AC units, water heaters, it could be electrical panels or electrical issues, things like that. We've expanded that because of the NSP program. After doing the NSP program, the savings in energy costs, particularly when you have some of these older homes, the, you look at the electric bills, and I have, of these homeowners, you know, you're talking $400 or $500 a month. When you can reduce it down to a couple hundred dollars a month for them, that's huge, and that sometimes makes a difference in whether they're going to be able to afford that house and keep that house. A lot of the people that went into foreclosure, it was because of these, the energy costs, they couldn't pay their energy bill, so, or they couldn't pay their mortgage because they had to pay their electric bills, and I've seen some of the electric bills, I guess it was $400, $500 a month, that's pretty pricey.
Well, thank you. A couple of months ago, I went with Ryan Russell, ER Code Compliance Director, and his team, and the house that we rehabbed and worked on and cleaned up was in need of every one of those things that you talked about, and it just, I can see these funds going into the home and strengthening the neighborhood and have people on the street say thank you very much for creating a beautiful home that just beautifies our neighborhood. So, I've been a supporter of this ever since I've been on council, reinvesting in our neighborhoods, reinvesting in our masonry homes that are, they're pretty much solid structures, and they just, you know, you have the shell, you could tear everything out on side and put everything brand-new inside, and you have just a beautiful home. And I think that's, personally, that's what I would like to see, these home dollars, and I know there's a timestamp to use this money and allocate it out, and it's what, by June something because they're shovel-ready. These projects are shovel-ready, is the word that you use, to allocate these monies into these programs, correct?
Yes, because we have the applicants already in here, it's a matter of getting some additional documentation. We do initial qualification of their, the applicants, but we, there's some follow-up, but we usually can get these done and out the door relatively quickly, within a couple of months.
What districts are these mainly done in?
The majority of the, our rehab dollars are used probably, you know, you would pin me on these districts because I'm not very well-versed in it, but I would just say, if you're looking at the areas we spend most of our dollars, it's, I would say, Lindsey West.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Thompson?
How many of these homes, I mean, when somebody applies, they're not just sitting there for three years waiting for potential for dollars to come in, right? Are they actively trying to repair their homes, or are they doing anything on their own to invest in their, in their home, or are they just sitting around waiting for the city to come save them?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Thompson, I just wanted to comment that when the individuals are on the waitlist, we also have CDBG funds, which are a little more flexible, so if somebody has an imminent repair while they're waiting on the list, say their plumbing or electrical or AC in the summertime, we can assist them with the CDBG funds because we don't have to bring the entire home up to code compliance with CDBG funds. So, we kind of supplement that program to help those if they have an issue while they're waiting for that long period of time.
Council, any more questions?
I was going to get short. What, I think we should put it out on the table for, what happens if the people, let's say we do $100,000 investment in their home and they sell it the next year, do they have to pay back the city?
Yes, so, we put liens on the property for the amount of the rehab. Those liens are 50% forgivable over a period of five, 10 years, typically, in a major substantial rehab, it's 10 years, so 50% is forgivable, it's prorated over those 10 years, and the rest of it, 50% is a permanent lien. So, in the event that they sell it, we get our money back. So, if they try to sell it the next day or within the next month, we're going to recover all of our funds. However, we always look, I shouldn't say all of our funds, we always look at what the value is on that property as well as what the current mortgage is on that property, because sometimes it's not in our best interest if a majority of it, excuse me, if they owe a majority of the money on the property. So, we really have to look at that. It's part of the underwriting that we do when we do these things.
I'll just conclude just by saying that I wanted to make sure these dollars were allocated to the best use and not necessarily the easiest use. I understand we have time constraints, but I wanted to make sure that we're really trying to make the most impact that we can for our community within the constraints that we have, and so, I'll just leave it at that.
Council, any more questions? Thank you, Michelle, this is your first meeting, baptism by fire here, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Welcome, staff, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, council, going through the agenda for Monday, any other questions? We have.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Thompson, you may want to make sure you're.
7B?
7B, so, that item, I think, came to council in October? Is that what we, is that the one that's been deferred since October?
That's correct, it came, it started, it was on the agenda for the first time in October.
October, so, you want to kind of give the history of, because we have a vote for denial on this one, so, there's been a lot that's happened, I guess, since then, so, Nada, you want to kind of talk a little bit about that?
So, this case was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted two to three, which was a denial in a way, or recommended denial to the council, and at the time of considering the case at the Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant was proposing to build attached single-family homes, basically duplexes, and was also proposing to have 36 units. There were a few of the neighbors that came to the Planning and Zoning hearing, apparently, they said they never, they were not notified, so they didn't really know what was going on, and did not really participate during the neighborhood meeting. So, the PNC took that into consideration because the applicant's neighborhood plan had indicated that majority in the neighborhood were in support, but then we had people showing up at the council. So, after that, it was put on the council agenda, and then the applicant went back to the community to actually meet with individuals and various groups to see how he can modify the plan or revise the plan to really get their support. So, based on that discussion, the applicant decided to actually, right now, propose single-family detached homes instead of single-family attached homes, and also reduce the density from 36 to 32, and increase the lot sizes as well. The initial lot sizes, I think, was 2100, but, let me just verify that. So, the initial lot sizes were 2900, and based on that discussion and reduction in the number of units, it's now also proposing to increase it to 3150. And so, based on that, the majority, my understanding from the developer or the applicant, most of the, those that were in opposition are now satisfied, they think this is, this will fit into the neighborhood. So, that has been the changes that has happened since the Planning and Zoning hearing.
And Nada, we didn't, it just wasn't returned back to planning zoning because it actually became less dense versus the other direction, is that right?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, it was improved since then, but we just, so, the question is, and maybe Council Thompson can speak to this, this item as presented to you would be for denial, however, if council wanted to be clear to, and I think what's stated here, what's posted, Nada, is with the modified proposal.
That's correct.
So, if council, for the pleasure of council, you could also give direction, what's the, how do I say it, to, say it, reverse it?
So, no, it comes up like once or twice a year, council, in which you get a denial or a recommendation for denial, or in this case, it's actually a procedural denial on this particular case, and then we bring it to council, and council is interested in approving it, unlike this case, because there's been changes since they've made the changes that they heard. they heard basically some of the comments at the P&amp;Z board and made appropriate changes. And so what we need to do then is, if council wants to approve it, is we put on the agenda, it's usually all cap, all bold, you know, a vote for this is a vote for approval. So that's very clear on the consent agenda that it's a vote for approval, even though the recommendation from P&amp;Z is, in this case, a procedural denial. And so what we're asking is, is do you want us to add that language to this agenda to say that a vote on the consent agenda is a vote for approval on this?
Yes, please.
Yes.
And Chris, thanks for bringing it up, and Nada, for the history. This was one that we had the chair of the HOA, as well as three residents that came in and visited with myself and with the zoning attorney. You know, we met and, gosh, for probably about an hour, discussed the project, what we could and couldn't do, and so forth. And at the end of the day, what it boiled down to is that the HOA was willing to work with the developer, and the developer was willing to work with the HOA to make improvements so that the HOA and the majority of the residents were on board. The three other residents, they weren't going to be swayed one way or another. They just preferred that it be dirt until the end of the day. And so I think the developer and the zoning attorney worked in their best interest as well as in the best interest of the community and the HOA, and were able to make changes that I think are good changes, you know, less dense and so forth. And so I was happy with the outcome of that, especially with the HOA on board, which does represent the majority of the individuals out there. So I would like to see this move forward.
I have a question.
As an approval.
Councilmember Whitaker?
On process, is it not possible to, since they made the changes, put this back to the P&amp;Z board so that we know if the P&amp;Z board now supports or doesn't support this, with the changes?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, so the P&amp;Z's major concern was the, basically, the type of product where the initial request was detached, I mean, attached, single-family homes, which were duplexes, because their concern was that type of uses doesn't really hold up very well in Mesa. And after the P&amp;Z hearing, the applicant actually has changed or is changing that from attached, single-family to detached homes. So that's one. And my understanding also is the applicant has also reached out to those three that voted against it, and they've actually expressed support for the project as well.
Councilwoman, yes, the answer to your question, could this go back to P&amp;Z and start over, start that process again? The answer is, it could. There would be obviously some additional cost to the developer to keep the land under contract, but certainly that is an option.
I mean, is there another process? I guess, from my perspective, I'd just like to know that P&amp;Z is on board.
And I think that's what Nada's articulating. He's gone back, circled back around to meet with some of those who, those who opposed it and told them about the changes. They seemed to, they've indicated that now that it is detached, single-family residential, that they would be in favor of it.
And this would pass P&amp;Z board at this point?
I can't speak for them, but based on their concern, I think the concerns have been addressed, so most likely will get their support.
Okay.
The applicant has touched base with the P&amp;Z members. You have not done that.
I haven't, but the applicant told me.
So we can follow up to make sure, but that's what the applicant is telling us.
Yeah, sure. I guess whether we go back through the process or if somebody just follows up with P&amp;Z board, how would you like to?
We could be glad to circle back around with them. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Haredi.
No, that's the same question as far as process. Do we, do we go back to P&amp;Z normally with these, if there's modifications based on additional feedback? Is that the process that we usually follow? I know there's timelines and other...
Sometimes, just on the applicant. But we've moved on some of these before. And I think what happens is that during the planning and zoning process, they get the feedback. Maybe that application at the time wasn't consistent. You had the feedback from the neighbors, and it helped, it informed the developer that, you know, it becomes kind of a motivation...
Sure.
To get it, change it. And so we, and then Nada kind of takes it from there, working with the applicant. Assuming you have an applicant who's willing to make changes, right? But certainly, that is, we could always send it back around. But sometimes it takes some time to, for the applicant and the developer to work these solutions out. But I think that's certainly up to the council. But we've been working on this for some time, and the feedback we've gotten from, as the council member said, really, it was that meeting, right, where we had the residents and the applicant, or the developer, sitting in the room and working out a solution that we felt like we could go ahead and move forward.
So what I'm hearing is approval, but make sure on the agenda that it says specifically, you know, that what we're voting on?
Right.
Instead of denial or approval.
And we'll be, we'll be considerate, and just, we want to be careful. We don't overpull the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we will at least visit with one or two that opposed it and make sure that they're, you know, they wouldn't be upset by moving forward with this application as it is today.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on. Any other items?
I had a real quick question on item 6A, that we're creating a zoning ordinance specifically for recreational and leisure zoning. Are we having people that are coming to Mesa that want to build parks for us and zone it as a park?
Yes, we do. He's smart.
Well, I mean, yeah, but outside of a planning community, I mean, does the...
I don't know, Nada, talk about how it would apply outside of that area.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, so this has been something that we've been thinking about for a number of years now. And the issue here is whenever we, we don't have any zoning industry that is specifically dedicated to have leisure and recreation activities. So one of the things, major issues that we face is whenever you have example, a master, well, planned area development, the requirement is to have a base zoning. And so all the PADs that you see, that is an overlay that is different from the base zoning. Each of them has a base zoning. The issue that we face is sometimes we have a base zoning that is, let's say, residential, but that whole area, you have about five, six, seven acres of that area dedicated to parks and open space. Over time, the developer, the developer, people come in and they want to develop it because the base zoning, actually, that's allowed for residential or other uses that are allowed in the base zoning. What this will help us is the leisure recreation designation will become the base zoning for PADs where basically that is all what is allowed. And if they want to change it, then they will have to come to council and rezone that base zoning to another district. That will also help the community to be aware that this is what is being changed right now. Also, when those cases come to council, and you want to provide assurance to the community that this five acre will remain as a park, the community doesn't see much when that is being changed into other uses that was not discussed at the hearing or the anticipation that was given to them.
But Councilmember Thompson, I'll give you an example.
Well, couldn't, couldn't we just do this under a development agreement and say that a certain percentage of your property, in a master planning community, a certain percentage has to be dedicated to park space, whether it's HOA-owned or whether it's city-owned?
I guess you could. But here's, to give you an example, this is happening across the valley, right, where you have these large developments that came with golf courses. Well, now the golf course, but the underlying zoning may have residential because there wasn't this kind of designation. So now you see where these communities have, you know, the golf has become less popular, and you have developers walk in and they're looking at that golf course and it says, oh, this has an underlying zoning of whatever, some kind of residential. So they want to now build it as residential. The neighbor is like, wait a minute. I mean, I play golf, but I like having that open space. So I think that's...
Absolutely.
The zoning, I think, has a more fixed and very transparent, you know, here's what this is, even when, you know, it's always going to be some kind of recreational open space. Because today, we, we're not, it doesn't accommodate that.
We don't have that. And if you look at the general plan, actually have open space as a character designation. And so if you look at, there is not much linkage between the general plan, character designation, and the zoning district to actually support that character designation. So if you look at example, neighborhood as a character designation in the general plan, you have all the residential zoning categories that actually correspond with that character designation. If you look at the open space character designation, there is not a zoning industry that actually correspond with that. So that's where this will actually correspond with that. And in addition, this will be available for, you know, those big projects if they want to utilize it.
So, just to make sure, because what I don't want to do is overburden staff and overburden council as well. So with the PAD, would they be able to float that PAD throughout the community so that it's not tied to a specific location? Because once you tie a PAD to a specific location, they'd have to go back in to count, for council approval if they wanted to rezone this piece over here back to residential, but instead, they're going to move the PAD over here for, for the leisure and entertainment. So you see, understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Because every time you want to change the zoning, you're either going to have to do it administratively or come back through for council approval.
So in the PAD, we have what we call major and minor modification. And so many times, all the PADs that you get, the zoning district or the underlying zoning district in the PAD, there are always slight modifications because sometimes you don't have the exact location. So the legal description designs it. But back to the question whether they will have to, the PAD does establish whether we have the leisure recreation or not. All the base zoning that are approved in the PAD are specific to a specific location. It's not a floating zone. So whenever they want to modify, it still comes to the council, and the leisure and recreation designation will not be different from what is actually current now.
So again, I ask, why can't it just be done through a development agreement? Because if somebody wants to change a golf course from a golf course to residential, you still have to go back to the agreements that were in place, right? And so you could pull up the agreement, say, no, this land was dedicated as a base use of park space or green space or open space or what have you. So couldn't you just go back to the development agreement versus trying to, you know, push an ordinance? And it seems like it's easier on staff and on council if you were just to wrap this into a development agreement moving forward. Because if anything changes, it has to go back to the development agreement for approval, correct?
So, hold on. I've got a couple more questions. You want to answer, yeah, Councilmember Thompson's, then Councilmember Haredi is up. He's on deck.
Okay, yeah. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we do do it by development agreement sometimes. You are correct. And this is really another, another tool, in fact, a more powerful tool. And you'll see in some development agreements, you're right, we put certain set-asides on open space or so forth. But you also see many times that the stipulations on those zoning cases actually are mimicked back into the development agreement. So they really work together so that we have really two means to defend. And this isn't, we've talked about it as if it's sort of a theoretical problem. It's actually been quite a real problem. The city of Mesa has been in litigation for more than a year. We ultimately prevailed in that litigation on, and I'll say it was involving a particular golf course that wanted to convert to residential use. Fortunately, there was a stipulation on the zoning case that required to comply with the site plan, and that and a number of other arguments. And we ultimately prevailed. But we also learned from it too, right? We were in litigation for well over a year on that case. And so, and many times, there aren't development agreements on every single site. And so the rezoning or having a base zone of open space is more powerful. It is the most powerful tool. And we'll look at it in appropriate situations and use it sometimes and not other times. And sometimes we use both because it, when you use them together, actually, a development agreement and the actual base zone together with stipulations, that's really the most powerful defense. And so you won't always see it in every single case. And you're right, sometimes you want, especially in the initial stages of development, when they're doing their initial zoning. I think your second question, going back a little bit, is that the location of the site might need to move. And so if you hard-zone the site, they're going to have to come back. And so we're going to have to look at that. In fact, we're working on a particular case, and we're not going to hard-zone the park site. We're just doing it through the development agreement. And so we're sensitive to that also.
We just don't have it as a tool, right?
Councilmember Haredi first.
Yeah, just on the, is this, is this ordinance from now to the future, or we have current properties that it will affect to, that have already been built?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Haredi, it's going forward.
Going forward.
Yeah, you have to, you have to, you have to place this zoning. So it's a tool for the future.
Right.
It won't, it won't solve anything in the past.
In the past, okay.
Councilmember Luna.
Just really quickly, I've been through this experience, and I highly recommend that we support this agenda item, and I'm going to be in support of it.
And I just have one comment or question. On this type of zoning, is this typical for other cities? Is this best practice from other cities? So developers and property expect and understand this type of zoning?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, so we did extensive research of all the surrounding cities here, and they all actually do have the leisure recreation zoning district. So...
So we're consistent with other municipalities?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving forward. I'd just like to address 8B on the agenda. I believe that's it. But 8B is a council report. That was just a zoning change, 19-0799. So I'd like to thank staff for working through that because that was a zoning change from NC to Light Industrial LI. And some of the prohibited uses, I talked to Councilmember Haredi about it, but in the discussion on page one, it's, I think their initial intent was to have a medical marijuana facility there. And however, it says down in the other line, however, the applicant may make an amendment to the prohibited use in the future. Maybe you can explain that a little bit.
Vice Mayor, Council, so we do, yes, the initial request when this came was actually to relocate existing marijuana dispensary that is across this line. However, after extensive discussion with the applicant and with our legal department team, the applicant decided to prohibit what the existing marijuana is not relocating again to that site because of certain requirements. And so based on that, the applicant still wanted to move forward with the limited industrial use or zoning because that will give him few other uses that is currently not allowed with the neighborhood commercial. And we believe that those uses still fit into the location of the property. So that's why he's proceeding, even though the marijuana is not going to relocate to that site. So based on that, marijuana dispensary is actually prohibited or is added to the list of prohibited uses in the development agreement. To be able to change that, they will still have to come back to council and modify the development agreement to actually take the marijuana uses as prohibited from the list of prohibited uses.
Okay, thank you. All right. So council, moving forward, it looks like 7 and 8 or some adoption of several ordinances. Item 9 is our comprehensive annual financial report, or known as CAFRA. And item 10 is our utility rates, changes, very minor. Are there any questions on that?
I have questions on 9. Are we getting a presentation on the CAFRA?
Would you like, we have one. I just, with time, we certainly can do that if you'd like to.
Yeah, I would, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Is Irma here?
All right, Irma, where's your team? You don't need a team.
Me and Mike.
Yeah.
Okay. Vice Mayor Freeman and Councilwoman, I have a short presentation today, and then I will be available for questions. Okay? We have completed our audit. We finished it early December. We received an unmodified report from our auditors, which is known as a clean opinion. There were no material findings. We did have one recommendation from them related to journal entries. So we have some controls in place that we can enhance. Our CAFRA follows generally accepted accounting principles, and we comply with all the applicable government accounting standards. Just some highlights of the year. The city's revenues have continued to increase. The city's total revenues, total governmental and utility and enterprise fund revenues increased 71.4 million when we compared 2019 to 2018. A big part of that 71.4 million dollars was the gain on the sale of the... Um, a big part of that 71.4 million dollars was, um, the gain on the sale of the Pinal County land. So that was 44 million. So those one-time revenues. And we used those revenues to pay off or to fees our excise tax bonds in September. Questions? Okay. Highlight of our total assets as they were at June 30, 2019, our total assets are $4.5 billion. The biggest component of that is our capital assets. That is all our buildings, all our infrastructure, our land, and that is at the net book value. So it's the historical cost less accumulated depreciation to date. Um, the next chunk of, um, the next largest part of our total assets is our cash and our investments. Um, any questions on that? Our total liabilities at June 30, 2019 are $3.8 billion. Our total liabilities have remained somewhat consistent over the last three years. Um, you can see from this slide that the majority of our liabilities are our long-term obligations, all our bonds, our general obligation bonds and our utility revenue bonds. And the next big chunk of liability is, um, our pension and OPEB liabilities. OPEB is other post-employment benefit plans. Those are, are benefits for retirees, medical and dental. That's all I have, so I can try and answer any questions that you may have.
Counselor, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Hi, Irma, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Um, I want to clarify a few things. Do you have the CAFRA that you can open, uh, on the screen by chance?
Oh, that's just the slide deck. Sorry, take over.
Yes, you absolutely can't take over.
That's what I'm going to do.
I can do that.
Can you?
Yes.
Okay.
Page 74 is my first question. It's not going to be the PDF page though, sorry. You may have to just search for the number 74 or something because it's not going to match. Unless you know the conversion in your head for the PDF.
I don't. All right.
So the first thing, page 74, I want to talk about the, um, enterprise fund. And I want to talk about specifically the, um, operating income for some of the, um, entities in our enterprise fund that we subsidize. And I just want to confirm that this is correct, or maybe you can talk on it. So the, uh, airport is showing a, um, net loss of 690,000, the golf course.
Chair, is your mic, is your mic on?
Yeah, I think so. Can you not hear me?
Not very well, but I'm okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the column, it's the last column, the operating expense. Uh, the convention center lost 1.2 million, uh, Ho-HoCom lost 2.6 million, Cub Stadium lost 5.7, and District Cooling lost, um, 38,000. Can you confirm that those are just, all that's accurate as far as, um, how much we're subsidizing each of these enterprises?
The operating revenues, depreciation and operating expenses are all accurate. They've been audited. Um, so from an operating income loss, the, you are correct, that the golf course lost, what, that 500,000, 1.2 million was the convention center. Ho-HoCom was 2.6 and Cubs was 5.7. This is all the operating revenues, so it doesn't include any other non-operating revenues that they may generate.
Sorry, what was the last part?
Um, it does not include non-operating revenue. As an example, the Cubs stadium, um, we collect, um, occupancy tax that is applied to them, but it's not operating revenue, so it wouldn't show up in this table.
Where would the numbers be found to offset those losses?
Um, it would be exhibit A8, page 26 of the CAFRA. So exhibit A8 is the statement of revenue expenses and changes in that position for the proprietary funds. So it, it goes through all the operating revenues first, which are the same as was in the note 13 that we were just at. All the operating expenses, it has one lump sum for depreciation. That's why you refer to that table because it breaks it out by, um, by utility or by enterprise fund. And this occupancy tax number, the 1.6 million dollars, that is non-operating revenue. Sales tax is always non-operating. It does not apply to any particular enterprise. So that's why it shows up there and not in operating revenue.
And that would be applied back, um, so which, which line is that?
It'd be the Cubs and I believe, uh, also.
And, and Ho-Ho.
Ho-HoCom, yes.
And those are line item out on page 25.
As well as the convention center. All of those.
Mm-hmm. But that 1.6 million is not included in note 13. And the reason it's not included is because it's not considered operating revenue from a financial reporting perspective.
So the 1.6 is a lump sum for all three of those?
Correct.
It doesn't have a breakout specific to each one?
We do not in the financial statements. We can provide that for you.
Okay, great. My next question is on page, um, page 47. So our internal investments, is the number where the money that we manage internally is the city, is that return on investment outlined anywhere in the CAFRA or in this section?
It is not. We, um, record total interest income as a whole for the city and that's in the CAFRA, but not specifically what the return would be just for the money that the city manages itself. Again, we can provide you with that information because we do have it.
We presented that, Todd, in finance.
Also, on a quarterly basis, I believe the council receives a quarterly investment report and that also includes that dollar amount in there and that percentage. So on a quarterly basis, that is being, um, provided to council.
Okay. The next thing I had was on page, uh, I think 85. Uh, so the PSPRS, uh, the pension liability, um, I think it, page 95, 85, 95 or 96. Can you just talk about the PSPRS liability and if it's, um, you know, because we're supposed to be paying off PSPRS. I believe we're in 23 years till we pay it off. But I struggle with the fact that the balance that we owe on PSPRS keeps increasing every year. I've never paid off a bill and the balance goes up every year rather than goes down. So maybe you can just touch on what's occurring with the PSPRS?
I will give it my best shot since I am not PSPRS. But what I can answer, there's three different things that will affect it. Um, the actuaries always have assumptions that they have of what the performance is going to be on their investments, how much is going to be contributed, and also, um, different like mortality tables and that kind of thing. Based on their analysis, they, they project what the contribution should be so that we can pay off the liability. If anything changes, so if they had an assumption of 7.4 interest returns and we only get 6.7, then they didn't have enough interest income. So that's not, that's less money that went into reducing that liability. They also have assumptions that our payroll base will continue to increase by 3.5%. Historically, the city's payroll base has not increased by 3.5%. So again, they're expecting more dollars are going to go in and they don't. And so, um, that increases the liability. So every year, if there's changes between what the actuary expected and what actually occurred, then they have to readjust the rates. And we see that every year our rates increase because our liability continues to increase. If nothing changed, if everything came in as the actuaries expected, rates wouldn't go up and we would be able to pay off the liability. That's something that PSPRS as a organization and the board is looking at to see what they can do to help, um, reduce the liability and not put an additional burden on the cities that are already having the burden. But I think that's about the best I can answer.
So it's just the actuarial adjustments that are changing every year that's.
Not just the adjustments, but the expectations of what they thought was going to happen and what actually occurred. Because actuaries are estimating what's going to happen and we don't have, they don't have the magic eight ball that says this is what's going to happen. So if there's a difference, then the liability will continue to increase.
There are assumptions, right.
Yeah. And one of the things that also happened this year, um, I already mentioned the change in the investment income and the expectation of payroll growth, was they changed the mortality tables to a specific, uh, public safety mortality table, which shows that they live longer and, um, so that would increase your liability as well.
Sure.
Well, I think to answer that question too, I mean, we've, we're making a payment every year. I mean, we basically have a mortgage on this to pay, make a payment. And so at the end of the principal and interest, I mean, we'll, we'll know where we're at because we're just at the beginning of this, right?
Right, but I, but I think the point that's being made, and it's, it's a fair one, is it's a moving target.
Yes, that's what I was going to get to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the problem. It's unlike a mortgage where you know how much you bought your home and what the terms are for the loan. Here, um.
We don't have any control over that because, uh, the SPRS or the legislature might as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And so, uh, where, where is, what's the out, current outstanding balance for PSPRS, total for police and fire?
It was on the presentation that I didn't jump to. Let me go to it really quick.
Sorry, I didn't look at the PowerPoint.
That's okay. So as of June 30, 2019, PSPRS fire pension had an unfunded liability of $203 million. PSPRS police pension had an unfunded liability of $396 million. ASRS's was 227. Since I'm on that slide, I'll just say all the numbers. Um, the city's, uh, OPEB plan, which is a retirement plan, um, for, um, medical and dental for retirees, had an unfunded liability of $746 million.
And these have all increased over last year's number or is ASRS at least decreasing?
I... Let me go quick. I'll have to get back to you. I don't know if that one increased as well or not. Because I don't have the prior number in here.
Okay. My last question was on, uh, sorry, one more question on page 50 in regards to our internal investments. Um, I believe in the, uh, Audit and Finance Committee that we said that our, uh, internal investment rate on, uh, internal assets was something like, uh, 2.2%. Is that, is that correct?
The aggregate, yes.
Yeah, how does that compare to other municipalities' return on investment on their internally managed assets? Do we do like a city-by-city comparison or?
We do not. Um, it's not something that needs to be disclosed in their financial statements, so it's not something that would be readily available for us. We would have to actually ask them and see if they would be willing to share. We can see how much interest income they earned or what their change in the fair market value of their investments were because that is disclosed in the CAFRA. But whatever their internal rate of return is, um, unless they posted on their website and we went and looked on their website, we wouldn't know.
Okay. That's all I had, Irma, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irma.
Okay.
All right, counsel, any more questions with that? All right, well, hearing none, that's the longest we've had on a, an agenda for a while. For council, so we're going to move forward over to our study session now. So if you want to move over.
You okay?
Paperwork. Our study session, um, we'll hear a presentation discuss the proposed, uh, First Avenue Maintenance Agreement and upcoming maintenance agreements for segments of Mesa Drive, Main Street, Udall, First Avenue to the Swere Hobson and Second Avenue associated with redevelopment projects under construction on the southeast corner of Mesa Drive and Main Street. Thank you, Angelica and Jeff. And just to let council know in order to avoid appearance of conflict on one of the proposed, uh, proposed future maintenance agreements, all be conflicting off this item. So Jeff and Angelica, it's your, your turn.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. Uh, Jeff McVay, manager of Downtown Transformation. And today I have with me Angelica Guevara, one of our Downtown Transformation Project Managers. And we're here to talk about the First Avenue Maintenance Agreement, which is on your agenda for action on Monday, as well as some additional maintenance agreements that we are working with the developers on right now that we intend to bring to council, um, hopefully in February. Um, but considering the fact that we have multiple maintenance agreements that are all related to the same project area, we want to give you an overall context and overview of how these will be working together so that you, uh, can see them, um, in, in totality, um, even though you might be acting on them individually. So to start is to give you an overview of the developments that these are associated with. There's two private, um, but, but coordinated developments happening at the southeast corner of Mesa Drive and Main Street. Anybody that comes downtown now knows of these developments. These are the ones, it's our first crane in the air in downtown Mesa, which is, uh, an exciting time. But, uh, the first is the Grove on Main, um, which, uh, is, um, a redevelopment of, of, primarily residential redevelopment. Includes almost 300 units of, of new residential development, um, mostly in apartments. But it also includes a new discovery center for the, the Mesa Arizona Temple, um, which is, uh, related to the second project in the area, the Mesa Temple renovation, um, where they have removed the, the old, um, visitor center from the north side of the building so that, uh, the temple is visible from Main Street again. In addition to the, the removal of that, uh, visitor center, they have also, uh, a major interior renovation of the entire building as well as a complete renovation of, of the temple grounds. In this area, there are a number of street improvement projects that are happening, two of which are, are voter-approved bond package, um, street improvement projects and several of which are associated with the developments themselves. Uh, so I'll start with the, the street improvement projects. Um, what is on your agenda today for, for the maintenance agreement is the First Avenue Streetscape project, but also you have the, the construction GMP for the First Avenue Streetscape itself. Um, this is, uh, funded by 2013 transportation bonds and 2014 utility bonds. It includes essentially the, uh, First Avenue from Hibbert Street all the way to the Swere. And related to the maintenance agreement, we're focusing on First Avenue from Mesa Drive to, to the Swere. That includes the complete re, reconstruction of the street. So new street surface, new curbs, new parking, new landscape, new sidewalk. Um, and, um, includes quite a bit of, of utility upgrades, including, uh, electric, gas, uh, sewer and stormwater. Um, that is, um, on your agenda for GMP, um, the, on Monday. And we anticipate that moving forward and hopefully being under construction quickly. Um, construction completed on that project by the end of this year so that times out well with when the temple and the Grove project is completed. Um, at the same time, and under construction right now, you have the Mesa Drive Phase Two, um, capital improvement project, also bond-funded, voter-approved. Um, this again is also a full street reconstruction, street surface, curb, sidewalks, landscape. Um, and if anybody drives through downtown right now, you know that construction's happening, um, as you come through. The Mesa Drive, um, project also includes the reconstruction of the intersection with First Avenue. I think that's important to, to point out. So those are the public street improvement projects. At the same time, our developers, um, of the, the Grove and the Temple renovation are doing street improvement projects as well. Um, key among these are, are again First Avenue. Um, from the first day that, um, that suburban land reserve came into the city to talk about their redevelopment, uh, at the southeast corner of Mesa Drive and Main Street, First Avenue was an important street to them. Uh, this is the gateway to the, to the temple. It is, uh, uh, one of the very few places in the entire city where we have a terminus view, um, where we, there is a building or a structure, something that is at the end of the, the, the street that you're driving down. And so they really wanted to make that a ceremonial street, um, as they described it. The, the, the desire though, uh, was well beyond the, the, the available funds in the city's capital improvement program. improvement program and also would have resulted in, in a level of landscaping that far exceeded what normal city standard would be for, for amount of landscaping and also then long-term maintenance cost. To address this, the developer wanted this street to have this, this theme and this, this landscape feel that they have committed to actually completing the design and construction of what we, what we have termed enhanced streetscape elements on, on their own dime and in coordination with our First Avenue CIP project. So they will be installing what is currently estimated at five, around $580,000 worth of street improvements as part of our capital improvement project. So we will bring the street up to a base level, we'll prep it, and then they'll come in and they'll install lush landscaping on the sides of the street as well as in the median. They are going to reconstruct part of the sidewalk as well as add some, some entry monuments and, you know, even, even things like a, we call it the selfie platform. So apparently, a lot of people like to come to this area and take their picture, you know, selfie with the temple in the ground, background. Right now, they just go in the middle of the street, which is in unsafe condition. If you build a little spot on the median, you have a nice safe spot where people can stop and take their picture in front of the temple. So that one is very important to them, to the point that they are paying for it for themselves as part of our project. But they are also trying to create a generally a themed, a street theme around their project with their street trees. So they are reconstructing portions of La Suaire, portions of Udall as well. And in those, and in each of those conditions, or each of those places, they're reconstructing the entire street, street surface, curb, sidewalk, landscaping. But they're also installing enhanced landscaping within the public's right-of-way. Again, landscaping that exceeds what we would normally install as part of a streetscape project ourselves as a city. Additionally, they're, they are installing enhanced landscaping as part of our Mesa Drive Phase Two project that they're coordinating with the city in front of their project boundaries, as well as incorporating some on-street parking, public on-street parking along Main Street and some small, minor landscape improvements on Main Street. It's important to note that all of these streetscape projects are public right-of-way streetscape projects, and any parking that is on-street that they will be including is going to remain public and open, and open parking. That's just on the, on the suburban land reserve side. On the, on the temple renovation side, the church is also completing multiple street improvements. So they're going to be reconstructing Hobson, portions of Second Avenue, and portions of La Suaire. Again, street surface, curb, sidewalk landscaping, again with enhanced landscaping within the right-of-way that exceeds what normal city standard would be. I think this is, we don't want to overlook this one, but on the, if you see down the bottom right corner, the little inset, there is an intersection that they will also be reconstructing as part of this project that realigns where Second Avenue and Hobson meet. Right now, if you go there, there's a pretty good offset between those streets. They're going to smooth that offset, so it'll make it a much nicer condition long-term from, from both the pedestrian vehicular perspective. The, again, in this, in these cases, all of these are public street improvements. The streets will remain public right-of-way and the parking on the street will be, remain open to the public's use. So now we have, I've set it up, we've got all kinds of street improvements that are going on. The, the developers are incorporating enhanced themed streetscape landscaping that it would be more expensive generally to maintain. So we want to now talk about the next step in the maintenance agreements that are going to come and follow for the long-term maintenance.
So with all of these projects that Jeff just gave you a brief description about, it is the addition of the enhanced landscape improvements that is going to require the maintenance agreements. It is because they want to exceed our city standards for landscaping of these streets. And therefore, we're going to require a maintenance agreement and, with the temple and with suburban land reserve. And so to address these specific projects, we're going to be bringing back two additional maintenance agreements in the future. We anticipate that'll happen within the next month or two. But today, what we are bringing forward is the First Avenue Maintenance Agreement. And with the First Avenue Maintenance Agreement, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's to allow a third party to maintain the landscape improvements that will be installed by the developer. It is, these, this maintenance agreement is very similar to the maintenance agreements that we currently have with Cadence and with Eastmark, except one of the few differences is that this is probably a lot simpler. They are installing and they will also maintain because they want to exceed our city standards. And so the maintenance agreement with suburban land reserve is for Mesa Drive, Main Street, Udall, and a portion of La Suaire. And we will also have a future maintenance agreement with the church that will commit them to respond, to be responsible for the maintenance of the landscape that exceeds the city's standards on La Suaire, Second Avenue, and Hobson. In addition to that, within the late, within the maintenance agreement, the city is committing to continue and to keep the responsibility for the maintenance of the public street improvements, which includes everything from the asphalt, the curb, the gutter, the parking, the sidewalks, and then the underground utilities. The future maintenance agreement, if you want to go onto the next slide, with suburban land reserve and the church will be brought to council in the next month or two. The agenda for the, for Monday, for the 27th, does include the maintenance agreement between the city, suburban land reserve, and the church. So it is a three-party agreement that we'll be bringing forward for First Avenue. The First Avenue Agreement, what it does include is it commits suburban land reserve to design and construct the enhanced streetscape improvements, and it commits the church to the long-term maintenance of the enhanced streetscape elements as well. The city will also maintain the, the street, the parking, public utilities. And what all of this maintenance agreement does is basically save the city. We've estimated, and it, we know it's a low estimate, but we've estimated that it's saving the city about $10,000 annually in just maintenance costs of the enhanced, of the landscape if it was installed to city standards. Now installing enhanced streetscape will require additional maintenance, but we're providing a low maintenance here of about $10,000 a year. The agreement term is for 50 years, and it is also set up to have 10 five-year renewals, which will happen automatically. We believe that this First Avenue Maintenance Agreement will provide a significant public benefit, and the upcoming maintenance agreements that will be coming on your agenda in the next month or two will also provide significant public benefits. So we are recommending approval of that. And we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I do have one. Is that okay? Go ahead. So as we develop in downtown, I just want to make sure any improvements that we make are in the concept of complete streets, walkable, connectable, allowing bike lanes, alternative multimodal car optional environments. And in the streetscape that we have, especially along First Avenue, which they're looking at being a major accessway, do we have bike lanes or SATV or some kind of other multimodal, other, other than just cars and?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the First Avenue Streetscape, Streetscape concept as it, as it, as we look at it from Country Club all the way to La Suaire, the portion from Country Club to Mesa Drive incorporates separated bike lanes. But the section from Mesa Drive to La Suaire did not include bike lanes. And the reason for that is that the, that section of street is significantly different. It's more neighborhood focused. It's the, the level of traffic, the level of, of intensity along that street is going to continue to be primarily single-family houses fronting onto the street. So the sharing of that, of that roadway for bicycles, we didn't actually, I guess from a concept perspective, didn't see that to be a, a biking street. Whereas when you move to the east, I'm sorry, to the west side of Mesa Drive, that is intended to be a bicycling street. So the, the concept includes, the long-term concept, I should say, includes separated bike lanes. Right now, the work that is being done from Hibbert to Mesa Drive is, is limited to some minor streetscape, landscape improvements, and my, majority of the work is in utility improvements. But I can say from a long-term vision, the intent was to have separated bike lanes.
But that would be west of Mesa Drive?
Yes.
I, I do question whether it could be incorporated. I understand single-family, but I also think this is going to be a major access for those selfies, for people visiting. We would like to have people to be able to jump on a scooter or a bike or whatever and be able to get to the temple in a safe manner. I would question whether all the car parking here would just be residential. I think it would probably be a lot of visitor-based, people wanting to get their photo and such. And I just wanted to have a safe access for other modes of transportation.
And, and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, the, the layout, the concept that is in front of you is actually definitely an improvement from a safety perspective. It's taking what is currently head-in angle parking and converting it to parallel parking. So just from a, from a ingress egress perspective for vehicles, they aren't backing into traffic where, where bicyclists might be. So just from the, just from an actual operations perspective, it's automatically going to be a safer environment for pedestrians and bicyclists. You are correct that a lot of the parking that's going to be there is going to be visitor parking because it is very convenient, and that's what we see on the street today. But it will actually, there's a minor, minor reduction in the number of on-street spaces, so there will be less traffic and it should be in a safer motions than it is today.
I would just see, if we don't provide some kind of access, we're going to have bicycles and scooters on the sidewalks with pedestrians, and it's going to be an issue. Is there any room to push out the parallel parking a little bit towards the center, rob some of the landscaping a little bit, to have a bike lane next to the sidewalk and push out the parking?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that idea actually was explored by our engineering staff and our transportation staff, and there just was not enough room to be able to fit that in there, as well as keep a landscape median and the parallel parking spaces.
We're getting, we're getting a little bit into the weeds, but one of the things that we are, we really had to struggle to preserve here is that all of those existing really old street trees are fed by flood irrigation. And if we change any of that landscape environment and we try to take those to a pressurized system versus flood irrigation, those trees will likely not survive. So any of that, a lot of our landscape area was, was, was preserve, had to be preserved in order to preserve those, those 100-plus-year-old trees along First.
So the landscape area is not, there's not additional width on the landscape areas existing, and it's just being enhanced? Is that correct?
There is additional landscape being added because they're bumping out to create those parallel parking spaces. And so instead of that angled head-in parking, we're able to bump out landscape adjacent to create the parking spaces and create the, the boundaries to those parallel parking spaces. But there wasn't enough room to have landscaping in addition to that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff and Angelica. Appreciate your comments on that.
The council vice mayor, that we have, sorry, we have an item on the council agenda for Monday that covers the maintenance agreement for First Avenue. And then there'll be subsequent agreements coming, what do you say, next month or two? But we wanted you to see the whole picture today, so, so we didn't bring them to you piecemeal. So that's, that's the purpose.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll get Mr. Boucher up here and talk about digesting. Pepto Bismol. Great gas. Thank you, Scott. And we'll talk about our food to energy program. Neil is with you.
Yes. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Boucher. I'm the Environmental Management Sustainability Director here at the City of Mesa. I'm joined by Neil Curley, who is our Special Projects Manager. For those of you who don't know, today is Neil's last day. He's going to Portland, Oregon to do similar work to what we'll be presenting today. So I'd also like to introduce Lauren Whitaker, who is going to be taking over for Neil in that Special Projects Manager role and helping move this project forward. Just to start off a little bit, so environmental management and sustainability, just to give you a little background, the focus over the last five years has really been how can we take things that we currently consider a waste and turn them into a resource? In addition to that, how can we measure the reduction and the harmful impacts that are associated with landfilling all of these materials and do that in a fiscally responsible manner? And so this is one of the projects that we've been working on, and it really is a project that I'm excited about. The City of Mesa is unique in that we own a solid waste utility, a wastewater utility, and a natural gas utility. And so what that does is that creates vertical integration for us, that we're able to collect these materials, process these materials, turn them into a resource, and then use that resource here locally. So all, the, the whole project doesn't leave the City of Mesa. It is all local and is under the umbrella of the City of Mesa. And the reason that we're able to do that is because of the unique nature that we have with those three utilities. And so before I turn it over to Neil, I'd also like just to thank those groups. So the Energy Resources Group, the Water Resources Group, and our Engineering Group that helped us through this feasibility study. Because the key component to this project is we have those three utilities, but really it can't be successful without all three of those utilities being on the same page. And their involvement and hard work throughout this feasibility study is definitely appreciated and will continue as we move forward with this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Neil.
Thanks, Scott. So here is the envisioned way that this program would work. This is really what we looked at for the feasibility study when we replicated this model, but on a much smaller scale, to determine how would the city go about doing this and what are the impacts that adding food waste to the digesters would have. So we really looked at this model where City of Mesa, or solid waste vehicles would go out and collect food waste from commercial businesses. We would take that to a pre-processing facility where we would remove packaging from organic materials, and then that organic material would be transported to the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant and introduced into the digesters. And as part of this feasibility study, we also looked at what is the best use for that biogas that's going to be produced? Really, the big benefit of adding the food waste to the digesters is you significantly increase the amount of biogas that you're producing. So the feasibility study took a look at what is that best use, really focusing on creating power on-site to power the plant. We found through the feasibility study, we'd be able to provide about 90 to 95% of the plant's needs if we were to go that route. Or we could also create renewable natural gas and use that as a vehicle fuel in the solid waste CNG fleet. Then the thought there would be to introduce that into the natural gas utility and then use that to fuel the trucks that would then go back out and collect more food waste. So we're really creating this closed-loop system, kind of as Scott mentioned before, because of the fact we have all of these utility under the City of Mesa umbrella, we're able to keep all of this, we say, in the family, right? So we can collect food waste, produce a renewable source of energy, and then utilize that renewable source of energy, all while staying within the City of Mesa family. And then too, for the feasibility study, we had a few other partners that we'd just like to recognize and thank as well. So you see those ones at the top were partners that we collected food waste samples from. So throughout the feasibility study, we did collect samples once a week from each of these partners and then pre-process that material and introduce those at a small scale into bench-scale digesters. So just we, and this was very purposeful in the selection of these partners. They represent a variety of food waste generator types. So we have a food bank represented here. We have schools, the hospitality industry, as well as grocery stores and a restaurant too. And then Arizona State University, we also collected from their Memorial Union at their ASU Tempe campus, so we got some food waste from there as well. And then we also partnered with the City of Tempe Grease Cooperative to get fats oils and grease or FOG. That was another material that we were interested in that could also increase the gas production in the anaerobic digesters. So we did get samples from them as well. And then also the Arizona Recycling Coalition, we received some grant dollars from them to purchase some of that processing equipment to replicate that on a small scale. And again, I, I think we can't make this point enough, but this is why this slide is in here too, the, this, the unique nature of the City of Mesa. The fact that we own all three of these utilities really puts us in a very strong and unique position to take advantage of a program like this. We have, you know, the consumption side of the renewable natural gas with the solid waste fleet. We've got the production side with the wastewater treatment plant. And then also you have the natural gas utility, which really makes us stand out and sets us apart when you look at other people who are doing these types of projects across the country. So we really have the ability to, again, collect that food waste, turn it into a valuable resource, and then we have the ability to convey that resource to a very beneficial use. So we just wanted to share with you today some of the things we learned and then get some feedback on moving forward and next steps. So really, some of the things we looked at for collection and processing, the thought was the City of Mesa would collect that food waste. So we looked at all the food waste generating businesses in the community. And really, the big question we had was, is there enough food waste out there available for us to collect? And the answer to that was yes, but however, in order to get enough food waste to fill the excess capacity out at the Northwest Plant, we'd have to get about 90% to 95% of those businesses would have to subscribe to a collection service with us. So that's a big challenge and a big hurdle right there. And we also did look at rates. So what would the rate be in order to fully recoup collection costs? And that rate would be competitive. It's about the same that we charge now for solid waste. So we were trying to come in under that, to incentivize participation there. We were looking for opportunities to see if we could help businesses lower their collection rate, but it looks like they would be a little bit higher kind of at if we were to collect all that food waste ourselves. We also looked at a pre-processing facility, so this is where that, the trucks would dump that food waste. We identified some equipment needs there and some land that the city owns that we think would be a good fit for that facility. And really looking at, too, on the collection side, talking to our partners. So those folks we mentioned earlier, the United Food Bank, BASHAs, and getting some feedback from them. And all of them really love this program. And one of the big selling points for them was, we told them, hey, you don't have to do anything different. There's no additional labor. And it's not like a compost program where we don't take meats or you really have to be careful about what you put in there. They can still throw everything away, it's just going in a different bin. So that was really a big selling point to them, is there's no additional time, labor, or training that they need to do with their staff. It's just very simple. We just have an additional bin. They put it there, we collect it, and take care of the rest. And then from a co-digestion standpoint, so priority number one for us was out at Northwest, they have to have the ability to still treat wastewater. We didn't want the introduction of food waste and/or FOG to negatively impact that ability. So this is where ASU came in very, really handy for us in looking at the bench-scale digester testing and looking at what are those impacts are going to be if we were to introduce food waste. And what we found out was some of those safe operating parameters. So we told ASU to really push the limits on terms of, you know, organic loading rates and some other parameters that they monitor out at the plant. And they were able to actually sour some of those digesters, which is, I know sounds bad, but we're actually, good for us because now we get to see on a small scale what some of those leading indicators are, that things are going south out there and we know doubt of course correct now. We also figured out, too, that that 40, that those digesters have a little over 40 tons per day excess capacity. So that's the amount of food waste we would have to collect in order to meet that excess capacity. And then also going on to, still on the, on the campus of the Northwest Plant, we looked at then biogas upgrading. So what would we need to do in order to take that biogas and meet it to pipeline standards? Because what's coming off of the digesters now is not ready to be introduced into the natural gas utility. You need to do some sort of cleaning or prep of that product. So we have been working with Energy Resources to develop that RNG specifications. So we've got that set. We're also developing some monitoring procedures with them to ensure that that flow of gas that's going into the system is meeting those specifications. And then we've also figured out how we're going to interconnect into that River View And so again, another real benefit of this, this program is you have a lot of flexibility in how you use that biogas. So we really looked at these three areas. So one, you can use it for power generation. So that's what I mentioned earlier, we can generate power on-site and power about 90% to 95% of the plant's needs. We can use that gas for its heating value. So that means just basically selling it like we sell CNG now. You can use it for your hot water heater, for your gas stove, going that route. Or we could use it for transportation fuel. Again, we have that consumption arm with the solid waste refuse trucks. So we looked at really what is the highest and best use for that biogas? And this is really where then the financials came into play, is looking at, okay, what are we going to get the most bang for our buck in how we use that biogas? So this next slide is a comparison of those scenarios and then some of the financial metrics that we put to those. So that power generation was looking at if we were to, again, add an additional co-gen unit out at the plant and then, and then power about 90% to 95% of their power out there just through the use of biogas. So you can kind of see there, so we looked at what that expected net present value, the ROI, and payback period would be for those. And then the capital cost is compared there as well. And feel free to ask if you have questions on these, but I'll kind of just go over this real quick. And then for the heating value, too, the thought there was we could enter into some sort of long-term purchase agreement. There are a lot of large organizations out there who are looking for renewable natural gas in order to meet sustainability or carbon reduction goals. So we've seen large entities looking to source that material, that commodity, so we could be the ones to provide that for them. And the assumption in this one was we could sell that gas at a premium. The market right now is about $8 to $12 per MMBTU for RNG. And compared to about, I think it's around three for CNG, so you can get a little bit of a premium there. And in this scenario, we assume we'd get about $11 per MMBTU for a 20-year agreement. And then these next two are where we really focused, because we have an additional revenue source comes into play here. So if we use that biogas or that RNG for a transportation purpose, we're now eligible to create RINs, or Renewable Identification Numbers, which is through the Renewable Fuel Standards. It's a federal program that is administered by the EPA. And the goal of that program is to introduce more renewable fuel in the transportation sector. And the way that we would be able to do that is if we are then the generators of that renewable fuel, that renewable RNG, and use it in our trucks. We would produce RINs. You can sell those credits out to the, basically, it's the big oil companies who have to show compliance. And the difference, too, here between when we say add food waste or no food waste is there is kind of some, there's some language in the RFS that is Renewable Fuel Standards that says if you add food waste into the digesters, you're able to create a D5 RIN, which is worth less than a D3 RIN. So if we were not to add food waste, we'd create a higher value RIN. So it's kind of then the difference between these two scenarios. So looking at that, we compared the different revenues. So those, you get a different revenue for the D5 and D3 RIN. D3 RINs are much more valuable. So looking at that, it becomes kind of apparent. So you're, in this scenario with the D5 RINs, we're having significantly more capital cost to then produce less revenue, even though we're producing more gas because we're introducing the food waste, but the value of that gas is significantly less. Whereas if we were to just capture existing biogas off of the wastewater treatment plant and not introduce food waste, we're actually seeing a positive return there and significantly lower capital costs.
Neil, there's a question for you.
Yes?
Councilmember Thompson.
Real quick, on the, on the D3, or actually in both situations for transportation fuel, are we looking at doing a, like a CNG island, so that it would be available to the public as well as the city?
So...
Or is this, or is this ROI based strictly on city use?
Is based strictly on city use. So if we go the D3 RIN route, we would be able to supply about 50% of the solid waste fleet's usage now. So we wouldn't have any excess capacity. The other issue there, too, is, would be tracking that. So right now, it would be much more cleaner for us to then prove to the EPA that we produced and then used that, as opposed to bringing in third parties and saying now you, we would have to get them to sign affidavits that they use that fuel for a transportation purpose. It just becomes much more cleaner from a compliance perspective.
But I think you could, you could, you could sub-meter into the, into the CNG station and then you would track exactly what the city was using versus what the consumer was using. Because I mean, honestly, that, that location is a prime location for traffic for the East Valley, right? I mean, it's right at the 101, 202 split and right off of Dobson, so it's an easy access on and off freeway. So I just, you know, when you, when you start looking at that, even if you supplemented the station with city gas, pipeline gas versus bio, but you, you can still combine the two, right? I think your, your ROI increases and it becomes a better commodity and a better revenue stream for the city selling to the consumer. Because I think there's still a lot of, of natural gas fueled vehicles out there, and fleets even, I mean, Valley Metro and others that would, that would be able to utilize the, the natural gas aspect. And we should be able to still capture those same RINs if we were able to sub-meter and show. Because I mean, you're not just going to pull up to a CNG station and fill up a tank and use it for anything other than transportation, right? I mean, you're, you can't put it in a propane bottle, for example, and use it for cooking. You know, so I, I think you would still be able to calculate. I mean, it'd be worth looking into.
Right.
Seeing what the return on investment is, but also something else you could do, is sub-meter, put it into our, our system, and then take it out somewhere else, right? And still, that way you don't have to build a new station if we're already, if we already have a station, for example, at EBIT, you would still be able to sub-meter what you're putting into the pipe and then meter what you're pulling out. And you should still be able to get the same RIN numbers because you're showing that you're, what you're putting in is what you're taking out at the other end. Irregardless, I mean, you're just using the pipeline really to transport, right? So you're just moving it from point A to point B and it's still being utilized for transportation, so your RIN numbers should still stay the same.
So yes, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, you're correct. And so in that $4 million number, that capital, there is not any capital that is dedicated to a CNG station out at that. What you just mentioned is exactly how we envisioned it working, was we would utilize kind of the existing yard where the solid waste vehicles fuel overnight, so that, and since we own the natural gas utility, it's a real big benefit because then we just introduce it into there and we're able to, right, pull it out at our existing fueling station. So if we do look at, we could look into that if we were to add an additional station there. We'd just have to go back and rerun those numbers, would be a little more capital, but we could look at then what the revenue, I guess, that would generate if we would sell that at a retail price?
It'd be interesting in looking at, a station's probably what, how much does a station cost now, like, I don't know?
I don't know. We just built, we just, well, what, we just built that?
Yeah. Probably about $15 million?
I don't recall, Councilmember Thompson.
I think, because this is kind of our first, you know, step into this, we thought just taking care of our own first. Getting that, getting good at that, making sure we understand that, how that all works. And I think what you're talking about is something that we could certainly look at into the future to expand into.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is we have, we have, we have our own natural gas utility. We should be selling our natural gas to the consumer on the open market. And I think one of the best ways to do it is through CNG, right, to those non-Mesa, I guess, residential households. So if we have a passer through that wants to pull off, I mean, because usually you could fuel it at Sky Harbor, well, they eliminated that. And there's maybe one station in Phoenix that's available to the public. So if we have an opportunity for somebody to fuel here in Mesa, we can sell our commodity to them. I mean, that's revenue in our pocket.
I think we're, in this exercise...
I know Frank stood up, so he may have something to say.
In this exercise, we're trying to keep our capital cost into this and a minimum at the beginning to prove out the concept.
Councilmember Horede has a question.
Yeah, on the capital cost, is this, is this new systems or retrofitting or upgrading what we currently have? What are the costs there? And then second, is there any like national, like tax incentives or programs that we can go into around? I'm assuming this is not, are there other, other types of this, these items happening across the country that are, are, you know, being utilized by cities? And are they tapping into like federal funding for creating, you know, renewable energy?
Sure. So as, as part of the feasibility study, we did look at what are all those incentives, financial incentives available to the city? And with the use of transportation fuel, so we did examine looking at California. So if you were to create your renewable natural gas and import that to the state of California and use it in a fleet there, they have their own program called the LCFS, the Low Carbon Fuel Standards, and you could potentially get more revenue through that way. However, then the downside is we wouldn't then use it in our fleet. We would have to be exporting it out and we would have to go and find a fleet to get paired with in California. So we did look at that. And another challenge with that, too, is a lot of those CNG fleets in California, because that program is a little more mature, already have long-term agreements for renewable natural gas. So finding a fleet would be difficult and what we're seeing, too, with that market, you're going to have to offer more and more incentives. So you're going to have to share more of that revenue back with the fleet in order to get them off of their current agreement. So that kind of erodes some of the revenue and benefit we would see there. So this is why we opted to go with this route where we would stay and just fuel our own fleet. And then your first question about the capital costs, so some of these, it's a mixture. So the reason why, and the power generation, heating value, and D5 RINs, those capital costs are so much more than the D3 RINs, it's mostly driven by a new facility, and that's the pre-processing facility. Because in all of those three, we're assuming that we're collecting and introducing food waste into the digester, but we're not in that last scenario with D3 RINs. So that pre-processing facility and all that equipment in there, we're estimating between $10 to $12 million. So that's where a large chunk of those capital costs are coming into. And again, as I mentioned earlier, that really, that challenge then for that D5 RINs, you're getting, you know, over half of your capital cost, but then on the back end, we're producing the renewable natural gas, which has the same value, but it's just the environmental attribute that is associated with it is worth significantly less.
So according to a study, like the D3 RIN, basically it's, you know, it's not, the study that y'all did, it, it, none of that food waste or if we go with food waste will be inserted in that. So basically, the study is not, it, it doesn't help along that? Or did you, you know, learn something that the last example shows that maybe it's a viable option? Does that make sense?
That does. And I think, so that's, oh, well, I'll get back to, I have it here, so that leads into kind of what we're looking to do. So that's what we're recommending. So we're looking to do a phased approach. And what we're calling that first phase is that flare to fuel. And so right now, what they're doing at Northwest Plant with all that biogas is this being flared. What we'd like to do is capture that and introduce and upgrade that biogas and then use it to fuel about half of the solid waste fleet. And what we'd like to do, too, getting a little ahead of myself, but on next steps, is continue to work with the EPA. So there is a lot of work being done right now in order to get that gas, if we were to introduce food waste, to qualify for a D3 RIN or to work on some sort of methodology where we'd be able to do a D3, D5 RIN split and say, hey, the portion of biogas that comes from the sludge is going to qualify for a D3 RIN, and the portion of the biogas that comes from the food waste will qualify for a D5. Then that helps out the financials because you're improving the revenue on the back end that you're able to receive. So we'd like to, we've been having conversations with the EPA. We've been working with Mr. Butler on those as well. So we're actively engaged with them and trying to work through some of those issues. They have the ability to make that happen. It just comes down to whether they really have the, the want to do it at this point. So we're still pushing and working on, on that. And what we'd like to do, too, is progress with this flare to fuel on 30%, to go to 30% design with kind of your direction here today. We'd also like to engage with the EPA on this E-RIN pathway. So this is another opportunity that we see is, is very positive, is this would allow for that biogas to be used to create electricity. And then if you use that electricity in an electric vehicle, you would be able to create RINs off of it that way. Again, that pathway is there, it's just the EPA has not approved it, but it is in the current RFS, ready to go. The EPA just needs to kind of do final authorization on that. And then also, too, we mentioned the other challenge for us was just getting enough food waste in order to meet that excess capacity. So we'd like to expand the boundaries. We really focused on just the City of Mesa with this feasibility study. We thought we'd be able to get it all within our borders, but what we learned is we need to really go outside of that and look at regional partnerships and maybe it's our surrounding communities and see if they have a desire to contribute some food waste for us.
On the food waste, is there contamination issues as far as, I'm assuming that's what you looked into, the processing piece, right? But what's a contamination from the partners that you're, you're getting this food waste towards you developing this sludge?
We did. So we, we tracked that, all the food waste partners. We worked with them, said, really, they weren't allowed to do, it's no glass, eggshells and bones. Those are big no-no's because those produce grit in the digesters. And again, we're very sensitive to impacting operations out there. So we made sure that those three items weren't put into the, the food waste stream. And if... those three items weren't put into the food waste stream, and if we saw those, we would contact the food waste generators. But overall, I think all of our, we did track what types of materials they were throwing away, and we saw less than 1% of all that material over the course of the program was actual contamination. And however, at the, but at the pre-processing facility, too, we have the ability through equipment, we're looking at de-packaging equipment, that would, you would put the food waste in, you could still throw away again. This was that big benefit to, like, BASHs, right? If they had some moldy bread, they could still keep it in its wrapper with the twist tie and just throw it in the bag, in the bin, and we'd be able to remove that for them. There's no additional labor. We have equipment that is able to separate out that material from the organic material, so that we're ensuring a high-quality bio-slurry is going to the Northwest Plant.
And then, last question, is there anybody else in the valley or in the state doing this type of work, or that's thinking about doing this?
So the city of Phoenix, at their 91st Avenue plant, so they do capture the biogas there, they're not introducing food waste, but they have an agreement with Ameresco to capture that biogas, and they introduce it into the Kinder Morgan Pipeline System. So they're the only ones in the valley, but across the country, there's some cities in California who are doing this. I think LA has a, an agreement with Waste Management to deliver food waste to their, it's the LA Sanitation District, they're introducing food waste into their digesters and creating biogas from that as well.
How about Oregon, hurting places?
And, well, yeah, and Portland, Oregon, yeah.
Sounds like a coup for Portland.
And if I would, too, I just, I know I kind of skipped over this to get to some of your questions, Councilmember Horede, but I just wanted to touch on this real quick, too. So we looked at not only just financial, but we also wanted to take into consideration some of the environmental benefits as well. So this is for all those four scenarios we mentioned earlier, comparing, you'll see capital cost, payback period, and then the amount of metric ton equivalent of CO2 reduction. So we really wanted to show this and say, I think, kind of the best bang for your buck is that D3 RIN scenario, when you look, compare capital cost to then environmental benefit. And if you look at that, I believe that's for the D5 RINs, it's like the equivalent of removing, I think it's like 1,000 cars off of the road annually, and that D3 RINs is about 200 cars, I believe, is what it comes out to. So just to kind of put that into perspective. So we did look at that as one of the considerations as well.
Councilmember Duff, do you have a question?
Yes, first of all, thank you for working on this and all your commitment to do this and converting our waste into a clean fuel, and that we're tackling this, and given our environment, I commend you for all your work, and I've been following it a little bit, and so I just want to say thank you. I know you have a little bit of a shortage on food waste, and, but I think that will come as we develop the program, as well as the technologies, and I think great opportunities going forward. I think I've asked this before, we can't use green barrel waste for this, it only has to be food?
No.
Okay. And how about all our citrus that is a problem in the winter, can we collect that somehow?
That would be great. And actually, when we worked with the Food Bank, you know, that's one of the big things that they were able to give us, was a lot of fresh produce was actually the biggest material that came from them. So yeah, that citrus is, is great material for this program.
There is somehow a service to collect the citrus. There's so many homeowners and property owners that have citrus that just goes to waste, they don't know what to do with it. If it would help our program, I think it'd be great. I think that's it.
So you're saying start a program to collect citrus in our city?
Kind of opportunity, there's a problem with people don't know what to do with the citrus.
No, there is.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that's a huge volume of waste.
Okay. Any other questions, Council?
Questions? On this slide, can you go back to this, the slide that talks about the ROI and the net present value?
Sure.
Can you help me understand this? So if we have, if this is an expected ROI that's negative, I don't understand how it has an expected payback period. Like, if you have a negative ROI, does that mean, doesn't, it's like, we subsidize it for the environment, right? It's not necessarily to get paid back or make money, but I just don't understand, I've never seen a negative ROI that has a payback period.
Right, so for our, we use the internal rate of return and looked at just the cash flows. So some of these, so like the, the D5, again, the D5 RIN scenario, you're actually making money every year, it's just over that life period, it takes that long to then recover the capital costs? That makes sense?
Um, I'll touch base with you guys offline, I just, it doesn't make sense to me. The other question I had, I assume that the purpose of this program is for sustainability, right? It's isn't, the goal here isn't to, like, add another revenue stream, it's to, it's environmental purposes, right? That's the whole purpose of this program, if I understand correctly.
I would answer that, that if, from a sustainability standpoint, when you look at sustainability, it's people, planet, and profit, and this is the type of project that we're trying to look at all of those things. So what we're trying to do is help our commercial business customers meet their sustainability goals here locally, by not throwing materials into a landfill. At the same time, we're trying to do a project that has an environmental benefit to it with the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and extension of the landfill life, but also do that in a way that is fiscally responsible, that has a payback period associated with it, or if we're comparing it to what the cost is of landfilling, or we've had a lot of conversations about recycling, if we start comparing it to what the cost of recycling is. So really trying to put a local diversion project together that makes fiscal sense for our customers, our residents, and the utility itself. In addition to that, if we're able to do this, and we are the only solid waste utility in the valley that is able to collect food waste, process it, and turn it into a resource, then that is an advantage for us in an open market that we compete with in the commercial sector, to be able to go to a business that produces this type of material and say, yeah, we can actually ensure for you that it's going to not go to the landfill, it's going to be turned into a resource. And so therefore, it gives us an added advantage that we provide a service that others are not able to provide.
Great, I'm just trying to understand what the overall goal of the program is. The other question I had, oh, what are your thoughts on, I know this, or my understanding is specifically to commercial, this is like on the commercial side, as far as the trash, where it's coming from. Have we considered polling or asking our residents if they would be interested, or maybe as part of maybe a volunteer program where they can purchase an additional trash bin that is like food waste only, to create another stream of food for this program? Or is that something that you don't find feasible, or what?
I think that's where, so within the scope of this feasibility study, we limited to the commercial customers. You know, you have, you have to put together a scope of work that is defined, otherwise you can have scope creep, and you, you really never get the study complete. And so we focused on the commercial customers. What we have learned through this process is that there's more that needs to be done in order to collect the food waste. That's why our recommendation is to do the project that makes financial sense right now, which is to upgrade the existing biogas that's being produced and use it in the trucks. But we've had continued conversations, so when we talk about the capital cost, there's been a lot of interest from our regional, other cities within the region of, how are you guys progressing on this? We would love to do this type of program. Is there an ability for us to work with the city of Mesa? We've had a lot of conversations with United Food Bank, they love the idea of this. You know, their CEO, Dave Richens, has had conversations with us, and he's added some fleets to his program, where they've done expansions of what they're doing, and so he's been asking questions, how can we partner with the city of Mesa? He would be also, would be interested to get to Councilmember Thompson's point of being able to have a CNG fleet that's being powered with this type of gas. We had conversations this week with the Closed Loop Fund about opportunities to be able to have 0% interest loans associated with this type of work, and we've had conversations with ASU in their Innovation Center, where there is like an Uber-type model, so to get to your question that you had, an Uber-type model for the pickup of food waste. So for me to send out the big giant truck to pick up at individual locations is very difficult from a financial standpoint, but if we can partner with somebody else, or we can figure out a way to have a subscription-type service, that we send a smaller vehicle and pick up smaller amounts of waste, and we can ensure that the, that the material is clean, that's going to be coming to us, then that's an option that we're looking at. So that's what we're, what we're really proposing to Council, is let's move forward with the first phase that we feel makes financial sense, and at the same time, we're going to continue to examine ways that we can take this material and turn it into a resource. What we weren't able to complete as part of this feasibility study is how to make that happen today. We can't sit here and tell you, this is the model that makes sense for us to collect food waste, process it, and get it to the wastewater treatment plant. But we have, there's a lot of things that have come up, and a lot of discussions that have come up as part of this feasibility study, including conversations, EPA has been very interested, Lauren Whitaker has done a lot of work with EPA and the Department of Energy, that they are very interested in this program, they see the issues that we're dealing with, and really, they, the way they've explained it, if the city of Mesa's not able to do this project, then there's something wrong, and they're interested in getting our feedback on what are the hurdles in our way, so that they can help us either lower those hurdles or remove those hurdles. Because again, if you own all of these utilities and you're able to use it yourself, and it's all saying local, this is the type of project that both the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Energy want to move forward. So there's a lot of interest even from a national level of, how can we assist in understanding and making this type of project happen? Hopefully that answered, I know it was a long answer, but just trying to get to the point of what, what the feasibility study covered, and what we're looking at into the future.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand one other thing as well, so the energy output for the CNG, for this specifically, would go to power, like, 50% of our internal fleet of vehicles? And that, that would be the output of the energy, is that correct? Or is there, like, other places we're sending it?
No, that would be correct, it would be used for powering our solid waste vehicles.
So if it's feasible, then, and it's only providing 50% of the CNG for our internal fleet, then we have the room to double capacity at some point, if we, just for our own internal purposes, right? If we wanted to take advantage of that.
Right, and so we, and this isn't the only wastewater treatment plant that the city of Mesa owns, there is another one down in Greenfield that's co-owned with the Town of Gilbert and Town of Queen Creek. It's co-located next to the Town of Gilbert's solid waste facility. The Town of Gilbert is currently in a conversion project of converting all of their solid waste fleet to CNG vehicles. So again, that was outside of the scope of this project. We really were looking at, can we, can this happen without having to, again, within the family of the city of Mesa? But there's, there's other opportunities with other wastewater treatment plants that we are owners of, or if we are able to introduce the food waste, that will increase the biogas production to a point that will fuel basically 100, it would fuel 100% of our needs from our solid waste fleet.
And, sorry, just to put some numbers to that, so, some perspective, so if we were to, as Scott mentioned, go to Greenfield and then combine that without food waste, so assuming we don't put any food waste, those two plants, after the expansion at Greenfield, would produce about 160,000 MM BTUs annually of RNG. But what our fleet consumes now is between 75,000 and 80,000 MM BTUs. So there could be a point in the future where you do have excess capacity, and you're looking for other fleets to off-take that gas from you.
Yeah, I guess my question was, I would assume that powering your internal fleet's gonna be a larger return on investment, rather than trying to go to the market, sell something, create the infrastructure, distribute it, and everything like that. So I was just curious, like, what that possible future expansion looked like, if we were just simply providing internal?
Right. And one of, anytime you partner with another fleet, then you have to get a broker involved, where they're actually matching it up, and anytime, what, what we've learned in where the city of Mesa, again, having all that, that vertical integration, everybody who's involved in the project needs a portion of the revenue in order to be involved in the project. Nobody really wants to get involved in projects and not, and not have a financial benefit themselves. That's actually one of the things that the city of Mesa is currently doing, we're partnered, we have a broker, Trillium, who we're partnered with a production facility in Texas that is currently producing renewable natural gas, we're showing its use in our vehicles, and we get a percentage of the revenue that's generated from the RINs currently. And we're doing that project as part of just learning how this whole system works, because we haven't been involved in it before.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Scott and Neil. I had a couple of follow-up questions, you know, on Slide 3 or PowerPoint, Food to Energy. I think this is a win situation for our community to be a leader in this. I mean, if you look at the cycle, we have everything. Like you said, we've got, we've got the organic collection, we've got the digestors, we have the trucks, we can consume the energy, the fuel that's delivered, and then eventually, it looks like be able to give out to businesses, sell to businesses. But I'm in support of the program, I really enjoy this, learning about it. And you're looking for direction, so which direction do you want to go?
Right, so that's this next step slide, what we would like to get direction, just to progress to 30% design with, in continuing work, the feasibility study got us to about 10% design, so we'd like to go just the next step, kind of sharpen our pencils a little more, work out the financials, get those squared away, and then come back to you with another update.
So Council, this doesn't require a motion, if you're okay, we can have a move forward with that to 30% design? We good with that?
Yeah.
All right. It's a go.
Thank you.
Let's start digesting more. All right, our next is item three, to acknowledge receipts of board minutes, is there a motion to do that? Councilmember Thompson, Horede, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, I'm hearing the motion passes. With that, it looks like our next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, is there anything to? Councilmember Thompson?
I have a couple of items. Last week, the mayor and I joined Economic Development, broke land, or broke ground on the Landing 202, which is 486,000 square feet of Class A industrial, Phase 1, and their second phase is gonna be 118,000 square feet of Class A industrial, and this is on Ray Road, just north of Gateway Airport, south of the 202. Councilmember Duff and Councilmember Horede joined, myself, as well as Manager Brady, on the MLK Parade this past weekend. Always a lot of fun, seeing the turnout of people there. And then we had a great turnout this Saturday, this past Saturday, at the Signal Butte Park grand opening, and the kids were going crazy, and it was hard for me to fit through some of the, some of the playground equipment, but once you get, once you're able to get to the slide, it was a lot of fun. So anyway, had a lot of positive feedback on social media about the park. So thanks to the park staff, and Kerry, for your staff and all their work.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else?
I have a few things. First thing, I'll start with an exciting news. Yesterday, there was the announcement of the Alice Cooper Rock Teen Center, the Sun North Country Club behind the Blue Adobe Grill, that'll be opening this summer. It's a place for teens to go to hang out after school, completely free, and they have instructors and mentors there to get them interested in music, dance, and explore their creativity. They have a center over in Phoenix, which is highly regarded, and I feel very, I'm very thankful that they chose Mesa in our blossoming arts district here for teens to come and explore music and dance and other performance arts. So I'm very excited about that, and I wanted to welcome them here. Last week was also Hacktivate, which we had high school students who put together teams and looked at a lot of different things facing our community and our city, homelessness, education, transportation, a lot of these things, great ideas. I love the program, and we had some teams from Red Mountain that received some awards. We Run Mesa, Councilmember Luna and I were there at the kickoff with a new program, We Run Mesa is a running program for underprivileged youth to get involved in exploring running, and to, for their own self, their actual health and empowerment, and that was kicked off at the Eagles Community Center last week. And Mesa United Way also had their VIDA kickoff of doing tax returns for limited income individuals, to have free tax returns done by people who are certified under the guidance of IRS, to do these tax returns absolutely free. They do like, I think, over $6,000, which is a huge service to our community. So I want to say thank you to those people who contribute their time, all volunteer efforts, contributing your time to do taxes, I think I'd rather paint a house, but, so thank you to all of them. But, so thank you to all of them. And I think that's about it for me.
Anybody else? I'll just announce, I was with the mayor and Councilmember Luna. Falcon, they had a groundbreaking called the Mesa Hangar. It's a $60 million development there for new aircraft hangars out of Falcon. It's all private money, so it's a huge win for our city and that development for Falcon because I know hangar space is very much needed up there. With that, if there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what's our future?
Looks great. Just a reminder, this Saturday, January 25th, from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM is the Regional Unity Walk at Tempe Peach Park. And also just a reminder, our next study session and council meeting will be on Monday, January 27th. Thank you.
All right. Well, hearing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Councilmember Haredia and Duff, and thank you. Motion to, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.[1771.51]